Thank you, Mr. President. Since May is a month in which we honor our emergency service workers and also a month that we honor military service personnel who have surrendered their lives in the service of this country, I would just ask that we have a moment of silence to reflect on the contributions of our military and also all emergency service workers, especially our Allentown firefighters, Allentown police, and Allentown paramedics. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the world call, everybody's here. I guess we'll take care of that easily enough. But I just want to comment that the mayor and I were late for the last meeting because we were at a reception. There are about 60 business people, council people, the mayor from Billings, Montana, and visiting the city of Allentown and the city of Bethlehem tomorrow, so we had to go meet with them. And they're very impressed with what they see in the city of Allentown. And also, I'd like to note is, when's the last time you saw a council president and a mayor walk in the door at the same time? All right. Now, we're open to courtesy the floor. This is for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hirschman, 405 North Dumeershey Downs on Tenth Street. You have a question. This evening, you had a gentleman from Harrisburg. He said, "What way he could save us money?" And my question is, after you read the morning call this past weekend on water and sewer problems, we're facing financial problems. Why City of Allentown did not invite the state in here to help we can raise the revenue and not lease some water and sewer, but I think you made a big mistake. And now, we're trying to find out the mistakes we're still making, which are many, because as you know, some of my friends that come up here always bring out about the problems we're facing financially, and we're still facing financially. If you take money on the appropriate balance, that's why they don't even have an appropriate balance by the council, which is $520 million on your appropriate balance. There's zero money there, but they vote it out anyway. And I think council has to respond to this administration when it comes to the financial problems here. I don't know. You just go along with the resolution or the order in the streets, and then you vote, yes, 7-0, or maybe 6-1. And I think, and then you're using the cash reserves, and then you're using money in the cash reserves, $5 million stabilization fund, and you can use that money. What you just want to do for the stabilization fund, they have an ordinance that says to be paying that $5 million off. You just ignore the ordinance. I mean, why is the sense of city council passing laws, and you just put in a wage paper policy, forget about it? You guys are just responsible. What are you not going to do with the orders, who are probably facing financial problems in Allentown? If you read Mrs. Okelos' column this past weekend, we face many problems. You know, we have an agreement with LCA. They could go belly up. What will we do if they go belly up? You guys own houses. It's part of the bargain. I think what has happened, city council has to get together, with LCA, a public meeting, and find out what's going to happen, but at least, they cannot meet the financial problem, the financial condition that they borrowed the money for. You know, there are $800 million in debt, that's a lot of money. And then you read Emily's thing, they have a billion dollars' worth of capital improvements for to get this money. You raise water, you raise the money for, send up the rainwater, you raise a wage tax, now you want to raise our, LCA wants to raise water and sewer rates $150. Why are poor people going to get this kind of money? I mean, something got to happen. You just got to have a public meeting on what's going to happen with LCA and this money and this financial condition we face with LCA. And I think you've got to read the agreement. Maybe we can get out of this agreement somehow and reach an agreement with them that we take back water and sewer services out of City of Allentown. I wouldn't want to see this thing go into bankruptcy if they can't borrow the money to refund these $800 million, which they're trying to do. If their financial condition is worse than it is now, the rates are going to be higher, then we're going to go further. No, I think council has to get together at a public meeting, at LCA, and find out what we're headed for.
Thank you. I think the mayor wants I respond.
Yeah, I'd like to respond. Obviously, before LCA does anything, there will be a public meeting over at Government Center. I'd like to respond. Obviously, the city has learned that LCA is considering a proposal to change the frequency of bills from quarterly to monthly. That would result in significant increase in fixed charge payable by Allentown residents, Allentown residents, for water and sewer service. The lease was designed to provide a fair return to LCA from the users of water and sewer, but also protect the residents of the city, by strictly eliminating permitted rate increases. The rate increase under consideration would exceed permitted increases allowed under the lease, and bears little relationship to the actual increase caused to LCA. The city is monitoring this situation closely, and will take all steps available to protect the residents from unreasonable rate increases. In other words, both the quarterly and monthly. We're on top of it, and we will continue to be on top of it. We're meeting with LCA on a regular basis, and we're making some progress.
Mayor, $150,000 reasonable or unreasonable?
You're misinterpreting what I'm saying. We're going to hold them to the fire to keep the rates at the current, obviously, system.
You say there's going to be a public meeting.
Mr. Hirschman, your three minutes are long up, and then the mayor responds.
One more comment. Before LCA does anything, there will be a public meeting, and we want all Allentown residents, no particular, and the nice fellows in the back, or anybody, to come out here and voice your opinion, because we will not be, we will stick to what the lease agreement says for LCA, and we will stick to that. Monthly billing would increase the cost for Allentown residents, and we won't accept that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman.
Great conversation.
Thank you.
If you would give your name, please, and where you live.
Sure. Mary Nolan Johannes, and I live in the West End, at 30th and Shoe. And I am here to discuss an ongoing problem that we've had with traffic on our street. I initially started this conversation three years ago at the traffic department, which I got no response for quite a while. I've continued to follow up with them, as has my husband. We now have three kids. I liked thinking it's a nice neighborhood, but it's turned into a superhighway since it's been repaved, and it's really frustrating to me, because any suggestion that I've had has been shot down. And then, any suggestion that I've heard from the traffic department hasn't happened, and I've tried to be very patient, but my patience is certainly up, because I've had an ongoing conversation about specifically speed boards, since that's the only thing that can happen to slow down traffic, especially from Mullenberg students. People just race down our street constantly, and I've been told, oh, there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do. Well, the one thing that was suggested that could be done is a speed board, and I have been corresponding with the traffic department now for a year about the speed boards specifically. We've had correspondence where they say they need to put in for a permit, they need to put in for a permit. I've heard this so many times, that when we had a meeting with the police department and the traffic department, we found out that the permits hadn't even been applied for, and that was months after they had initially suggested it.
So, she's not going to run you a permit for what?
A permit for the speed board. Apparently, they have to go through PennDOT to put a speed board up to say what speed you're going, since people routinely speed significantly, and I was told that that's not true, you don't need a permit from PennDOT?
I'm looking at Mr. Hamlin. In traffic forever, but...
It is new, but you do need a permit.
Do you not?
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay.
For permanent mounted speed boards.
I want to play your timeline.
That's right. We were hoping to have speed boards that work a little bit better than the ones on the Parkway, which is just a block away from us, because they're usually not working. It's just very frustrating to me, because I feel like any suggestion has literally been eliminated, with the exception of this. This is the one thing that they keep coming back to me and saying they need a permit for, but I now have a year of correspondence that I have over email, and I have on this timeline, that has been completely just ignored. They just keep saying, oh, we'll let you know, oh, we'll let you know, we'll keep you updated, we'll let you know. No one ever does. People rarely respond to me. They respond to my husband, which is extremely frustrating to me. I've tried to be patient, but we have a dangerous street, we have a nice neighborhood, it's been repaved, we're just supposed to help things, even though I was in disbelief that it would help things, and it has absolutely worsened things. They said that it would narrow it. It looks like a highway, and people drive like it's a highway. Mullenberg is right down the street, it's used, these students, out-of-state license plates, it's lying down. Crosswalk signs, no one cares about a crosswalk sign. Maybe they would care if they saw what speed they were going, since that's the only thing that anyone is willing to do to make it stop, because any other suggestion, I've been told, PennDOT won't allow it. And I'm just, I'm sick of hearing that PennDOT is regulating everything, don't we have any power over any of this? If anyone would like to see it, or remind respondents with the traffic situation.
All right. If you would please, can you email that to Mr. Hamlin?
Sure.
Or give him a copy of it. Something new, we have the mayor at a council meeting, and I think, hopefully, we'll get a resolution to this. I mean, do we need a permanent speed board there, or can we put something, at least, temporary?
There were two speed studies that were actually done on the roadway. Neither one of the roadway studies showed that really, actually, anything else needs to be done than what's there at this point in time, and it was shown to both of them at a meeting with two captains from the police department and Nelson. We had said that we would put the boards in, we were designing it for the boards to go in, the law changed, and we needed to get a permit, so there was regulations that changed what we needed to do to that actual light. We have the plan here tonight, and you can see it.
I mean, that was a year ago, so it's just like, communication helps. I didn't know this.
I have probably about 200 emails that were sent back and forth with you.
Yes, starting a year ago about...
I have them all saved. I'm not going to get into an argument.
I have them all saved right here, too. I have them all marked.
We have what's needed to be done, and we are working towards getting four speed boards installed in that area.
I've heard that.
Hold on. Based on that speed study, the police didn't do an enforcement, like, within a few days afterwards, and then we haven't seen anything since then?
And speeding, by the way, has to be 11 miles an hour over the speed limit, so in order for you to even say it counts, which I just find ridiculous. I mean, I've heard this all before, so I just, I have no time for it, except heard it all. I've heard it, oh, it's in the works. Like I said, I have it over email, just like you do, I have it all marked, I have the timeline. I've heard it, and the communication has not been good, and...
Mr. Messinger, can we get an update by next council meeting for us?
Sure. Can we get a speed board? That's what I'm waiting for. I mean, I've been waiting for the speed board.
Would you apply, is the application submitted to PennDOT?
No, no, you got to direct your questions to the council. Okay, this is not an argument.
So, I talked with Mr. Messinger September 2017, and he said, "We're submitting the application," and then we had a meeting with Nelson and the police in November, and it hadn't even been submitted yet.
Right. We're going to have an update for you by the next council meeting.
Perfect.
They're looking at us, and we'll see where we go from there. All right. Thank you. If you want to come back, then we'll make sure we have an answer.
Mr. President, if I could weigh in on this, please. I'm a neighbor, and I'm on Q Street all the time, and this is something that I've, a topic of conversation between Mr. Messinger and myself for a number of years. You know, they did repave the streets, it's quieter now, they did put in traffic calming strategies, which the crosswalks and the white lines down the side, and newer studies to show that if you narrow the driving area, people are supposed to go slower. Doesn't always happen. The Knowles are right, certainly some people certainly speed or appear to speed. My point of view, I mean, I don't live on that street, but I'm on it quite a bit, is we're making some progress on it, we're limited by what PennDOT will allow us to do. For instance, a stop sign, one would think would be a pretty decent remedy for something like this to break up traffic, but can't do it. So, you know, they're working toward this resolution, and I understand it'll be done in, you know, hopefully, the not-too-far distant future.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I understand that sometimes when we deal with state bureaucracies, it takes a long time, and I've dealt with them, but we'll have an answer by next, we'll have an update, at least, by next council meeting. Thank you. Next. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name's Janet Garinger, and I live at 2524 Barnes Lane in Allentown. My neighbors own a property that's, I mean, some of you have heard about. They wanted to develop it, they wanted to change the zoning. Luckily, you guys have absolutely said no zoning change. Now, they have done something that's really wonderful, and I don't know whether you've received this, but I want to make sure that you have.
Who's doing?
It's a letter from my neighbor, asking the city council to buy the property. I didn't get a response. I put a call into the mayor's office, but I know how busy he is, so I just thought I'd come in tonight and ask you guys whether you've seen this, whether this is a good idea to you, and what I can do to help my neighbors become heroes by making this neighborhood property into a park.
We've seen the, we've seen the letter.
Well, basically, have you made a decision on it? I mean...
Any discussions we would have on it would have to be in the open forum here, and we have not. We've just received this letter, I just saw it on my email.
I guess maybe the reason why I'm coming directly into it is because the letter that I got was dated the 11th, and in the letter, it asks for you to respond to them within 10 days, and it's long past the 10-day window. So, I'm just curious whether you haven't spoken to them, and whether this is a viable option.
Well, I have not spoken to them, I can't speak for any members of the city council, but that would be helpful to the administration to engage in conversations with them about that.
Mr. President, if I could just ask our solicitor a question on this?
Sure.
Mr. Quancho, would not something like this fall under the exemptions for the open meeting, if it's a property acquisition that the city's choosing? You know, I just, I don't want us to potentially get into a position where we have to say something if we're looking at this and we're in a negotiating position. That's my question.
If, in fact, city council is in negotiation to acquire real estate, then that discussion and the negotiation involved in the discussion would be exempt from the public disclosure requirements of the Sunshine Law, Nelson, and...
But only if we're actively engaged in it?
Again, if the city council is engaging in that activity.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for your...
That's fine, and I can tell you, at this point, I have no knowledge of any council person engaged in any conversations with these people about purchasing the land. I think that would be something for the administration to engage in that conversation and then bring it forward.
We are not either at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so, at this point, we have to just sit and wait, or assume that the neighbors are going to develop it?
Well, they've been denied, so they withdrew their application.
Yeah, they surveyed it for smaller chunks, and there's little orange things out there, so it looks as if they are moving forward to, to help with something.
Well, I guess I'll ask the administration, has there been any plans submitted since they withdraw their last plan?
At this time, there's no room for that property at all. The initial plan was, is gone.
Okay. Thank you. If the administration wants to engage in conversation with them and then bring anything to council, they can certainly do that, and we will, you know, we will talk to the administration about that.
And is there anything I could do with the neighborhood to help move this forward?
If you guys want to come up with $550,000 and buy and go for it, that's not the only thing I can suggest to you.
I tried.
I believe that you did.
I truly did try.
Yes, I believe you did.
Yeah, I sure did.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time, and hopefully, you guys will...
Right, and any change would have to be advertised, and you would have the opportunity to...
Yes, I mean, again, I've made phone calls, so I just thought I'd come in and just kind of, you know, think about it, please.
We're glad to have you here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Chris Martin, I live at 10th and Walnut. I'm also a member of the Allentown Coalition for the Neighborhood Committee, so I'm not sure if that affects the time, but I don't anticipate it being more than three minutes anyway. This past Monday, or this past Sunday, rather, we held a community event about development in Allentown, and that event, that forum was an opportunity for about 60 residents of the city to weigh in on their priorities on making Allentown a better place to live. One of the common things that we heard, both in the session and the feedback, was about wages, specifically the minimum wage. I've been told that, from various people, whose opinion I trust, but I've been told that the city has no authority to raise the minimum wage, so I tried to verify that myself by reading the city charter, and then by going to 2014 PA Act 22, which oversees the regulations of third-class cities or class-three cities. And in there, I couldn't find specifically, I couldn't find anything that said that Allentown wouldn't be able to raise the minimum wage as a city, so I was hoping that perhaps council could settle that for me tonight, whether or not we, as a city, can pursue doing that.
Well, we're looking at the solicitor here.
Yeah, and I turned on my mic specifically to address this. So, Mr. President, there are two issues that have to be considered. First of all, the perm here, the solicitor's office, is to represent the city, which includes the mayor's office, city council, and its various authorities and boards and commissions. Practically speaking, we cannot provide legal advice to individual citizen or a group that's entertaining a notion as to taking specific action as regards city law, so that's the first consideration. The second consideration, notwithstanding what I just said, our professional rules of conduct don't allow us to, solicitor's office, to convey any type of legal advice when there's a possibility of adverse interest. So, we represent the city, and we have on the other side of the table an individual or an individual group that has potential interests that are adverse to that, to our client, which is the city, then we can't say anything there either. So, based on those two considerations, my recommendation to the gentleman is to seek outside counsel to resolve that issue, and if that outside counsel recommends a certain course of action, then this gentleman should respond to it, yea or nay, but in any event, the solicitor's office cannot comment or make any type of recommendation as to the questions that you propose.
Thank you, Mr. Quancho.
Mr. President, just a question, but if we initiated the conversation, Mr. Quancho, you could render a opinion, correct?
Our client is the city, the city council, the mayor's office, and various authorities, boards, and commissions. Now, if a majority of council members initiate that question, then of course, the solicitor's office will respond in kind, but because the question's being initiated and posed by an individual that's not the city, we cannot respond to the question.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Quancho. Thank you.
What do you need, everyone?
Hello.
My name is Sharon Shannon. I just, I know, you're on Union Street. I just want to ask a question, please. Everyone that rides down Seventh Street, there's a problem, please. I just want to ask, if there's any way that, when you put on Seventh Street, on the left and on the right, if there's any way that anybody, mayor, please, if the officers, if there's anybody that can be out there, you cannot ride down Seventh Street without the double parking. I know, everybody rides down Seventh Street. Like my nephew told me, if you do not ride down the middle lane, you will not get down Seventh Street. Please, if there's anything anybody can do.
I'd like to address this on the line. I'm on the board of the Parking Authority, along with Mr. Hamlin, and we have a new director, and his main purpose, one, I shouldn't say his main purpose, but one of his things on the agenda was the problem on Seventh Street, or is the problem on Seventh Street. And according to our second, our last meeting, obviously, we said before that, they tripled the amount of tickets. He has his officers out there, and every day, they have to report to him how many tickets they gave on Seventh Street. And he more than doubled, I say tripled, he more than doubled the amount in two months of the tickets they had given out. In response, he's gotten complaints from a lot of the business owners, that their ticketing, that the people are double parking. So, it's a catch-22, and I assure you, the Parking Authority and the Police Department, and I know Captain Grabbits himself, the captain has been out there giving tickets. So, have you noticed at all, even because I know that I've noticed it, I didn't take note, and I think with Mr. Hamlin, too, that we've noticed that there is less parking, but when we try to do this, then we have the merchants getting upset and calling the record that they're ticketing too much there. But I assure you, we're trying, and the Parking Authority is, and the Police Department.
There can be a parking space, and they will park, double park right there, and so that's...
Now, that's called lazy parking. That ticket is for $250.
Double the amount.
It's double the amount. So, as far as I know, I think they're doing...
And I will have a police officer tell me to move, and there will be somebody in front of me double parking, and they will not tell me to move.
All I can say is we're trying, and I know the Parking Authority has really put the pressure on the officers doing that, and the Police Department, who are working on it. Thanks.
I don't know what to say. It's rough. Thank you.
Sir.
Hello, my name's Matthew Shutter, and I live at 4346 Schaller Drive, Allentown, CA. I have two inquiries here. Is this meeting conducted under Robert's Rules of Order? And how much would it cost? I understand somebody made a comment about buying the water and sewer department back. How much would it cost the city to do them things?
That's a question you're not going to get answered tonight, I guarantee you that. I don't know what the lease agreement says, I don't know what kind of financials, I mean, what it would be, but, and I'm not even going to hook this solicitor to get an answer on that, because...
Mr. President, as far as the second question, I cannot address, but as far as the first question, if you refer to Rule 14, actually, Rule 15, where the city council rules, it does say Robert's Rules of Order will govern proceedings of council matters not specifically provided for here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of this law, or...
Kansas, on 721 West Combeau Street. The couple, the family that was up to relative, dressed in Shoe Street, and the suggestion came about a stop sign, and was told that you can't do it because of PennDOT. Well, the city did that very same thing at 16th and Shoe, as I'm sure three of these were police officers at the time, might remember. They put one up there, PennDOT didn't authorize it, they took it down, city council overrode it and put it back up. So, you have an opportunity to do the same thing again for safety and legal reasons.
Well, thanks so a lot, Mr. Loggins, but I don't think that if the state controls it and they say we can't do it, I don't think doing it is the right thing to do.
We did it on Shoe Street.
Because we did it, doesn't make it right.
Yeah, well, it's still up there.
I don't know how they enforce it. I don't know.
That's the question I have, because somebody addressed it, somebody asked me about that, and I was told, because officers are here, that if PennDOT doesn't okay it, that it means absolutely nothing, if you go through that stop sign without a citation.
That's correct.
So, what's the purpose of putting something up that I can go through and, you know?
I think you were a member of the city council when they overrode that, and what we did, basically, at that time, we had a study done, so they, the traffic department did a study on it, they got signatures from the neighborhood, the neighborhood, and the neighbors signed every course, and a staff sign. You wait, you put it on, they asked us to take it down, we took it down, then we put it back on again, and it's still there. And I think it alleviated the issue that we had, because there's a traffic scene on 15th Street, that's one on 17th Street, and there was none on 16th Street. So, people are out, slow down. I was going to say that earlier, because, you know, the couple was here. There may be a way to do something. I don't know if we can, I guess we couldn't put a speed board, like we put on Sherman Street, but I think we'd, but I think it may be an option, that we may have to fight. This is how it is, our residents, and they're asking for it, you know, and I think we should do the best we can to provide public safety for our residents. Yeah, it's just a suggestion, since it's been done before, maybe we should look into it again. Thank you.
Kansas, 214 North St. Cloud, represent Allentown, Tennessee, as well as the 10th Ward of North. Curious if when the city's going to start co-mastling with groups again. Corey Robinson is a great job of actually getting out to this beat, but you don't see any other council members ever at these meetings. And also, I was curious if we're going to get in with walks again, by the way, of course, we never really walk, 10th and Blatchley. Regarding the 10th Ward also, though, twice now, I have called the police about the four-wheelers that tear up Jordan Park. I see where they come out of, I saw where they came out of, twice now. You know what the response was by the police officer on hand? Wasn't pleasant. Matter of fact, I called the dispatch, and I asked who the heck the officer was, and I said, you know, I don't even care anymore, because I don't even bother calling anymore. And that's what residents are getting attitude from some of these officers, not all of And that's what residents are getting attitude from some of these officers, not all of them, but there are still a couple that I don't care if they have a bad day because I'm sorry, but they need to go to judge, they need to turn it on and off. I turn it on and off, they need to turn it on and off. But luckily, we do have some excellent officers because there was Sergeant DeWalt that like talked me down from like, you know, I mean, he said, he shorted me, he was going to talk, you know, have a talk with this guy, right? We got Popeyes, I watched this four-wheeler tear it up and down, the whole thing. People screamed at him, you know, because he was getting so close to the kids. Going to Popeyes, there's a thing to do in Popeyes, like 100 police officers set it up, including one single Allentown cop, it was the poor guy to show first. I waited until he was done that and he was by his patrol car for like five minutes, so I figured he's had to unwind from that. And I asked him, was he coming to Jordan? He goes, you people need to stop bothering us with that, we can't do nothing. I get we can't chase them, but still, that's not the response I should get because what I was going to say to him was on the 400 block of Carrot Street, there's a red four-wheeler constantly comes out of there. But instead, he doesn't want to hear it, he hops in his car and drives off. There are residents that want to help, I'm not telling one, there are residents that want to help, but that's the attitude they get from some, not all. I mean, there's some, my roommate actually caused an incident on, with a neighbor regarding a barbecue, the two cops just took it up, ended up getting both parties involved, laughing by the time they left, when earlier it wasn't too pretty, but still. The point is, is that somebody's opposite, I don't understand what the problem was, all I was trying to do is give information and he wasn't even like, wouldn't even consider it. What? And then walk away. No, he got in his car and closed the door and they showed the window is shut. That's ridiculous, it really is. The 10th Ward seems to generate a lot of these other places. And it's amazing how many are on Carrot Street on a constant basis. And speaking of the parking issue, not just Seventh Street, but Russell Street, Orange Street, Monroe Street, Carrot, Green, Mary Street, just to name a few, there's no parking on any of them. Go home tonight on one of them streets, each one of you go home tonight on one of them streets. Look how many people are parked on Russell Street. There's no parking on Russell Street, all the way from like 11th Street, all the way to 18th. There's no parking on both sides of Russell Street. And there is, I'll guarantee you, there's at least 20 cars on it. Nobody stops. Cars are parked to the edge of the road anymore, they're all the way in the corners anymore, not just to go run into the store because we're all building, doing that once in a while. I really didn't care about that part. Average fire hogs and freaking blocks, I wish the fire department, which I just, not just seem to have that many fires, but I wish the fire department was doing billiards, I lived in 4 Richmond, I watched them for the hoes right through somebody's car. They don't care, or they barrel them right out of there. But I think, the parking lot is not 24 hours, the police are. Ten police, not smart enough to take this one to downtown, I know there's not a lot of downtown, we've got a lot of pools in the city, but still, it makes it more neighbors to start getting on the show of nerve. I have a big car, I have Crown Victoria, I can't even get down some of these streets anymore. I live at Russell and St. Cloud and it's ridiculous to picture that real quick, since I have 30 seconds left. St. Catherine's, why isn't there allowed to block roads and dictate traffic flow for so long of a period of the morning, well past the time on their do not enter sign that they somehow got on their street? They don't even take it in half the time, it sits there all day. I don't understand that. I would like to, I would really like to know about that, but anyway, I'm hoping that the mayor walks might actually start happening again and I know this new mayor will do that. I do.
My name is James Holmes, a resident of Allentown and owner of Double Decker Records at 808 St. John Street. I've come here this evening to express my concern over city ordinance 301.03 for second-hand dealers. I am a record shop, while I do buy used records, I am not a second-hand shop and I do not believe this ordinance applies to my business. Started in 1996 with inventory that could barely fill a minivan, the store has grown dramatically over the last 21-plus years and was recently named the fourth best record store in America by Yelp. I deal in new and used records, my inventory is mainly acquired from individuals visiting my store. Most of these individuals are either regular customers trading items in, retirees looking to downsize, or family members settling estates. Under city ordinance 301.03, I am now required to take a photo ID, photograph, and take the thumbprint of anyone selling or trading items into my shop, upload a daily purchase report to the Police Department, and hold all items purchased for 15 days. I feel that this is an invasion of my customers' privacy and could be detrimental to business. I'm a record store, I don't buy precious metals, video games, DVDs, cell phones, or other general used goods. Records are not a commonly stolen item. If they were, I would have been contacted regularly by the Allentown Police Department and in 21-plus years, I never have been. Used records have a lot of blood in my business and there are many avenues for individuals to sell items. There are many online sites and other stores outside city limits to sell items too. I realize the purpose of this law is to reduce trafficking of stolen goods, but my customers should not be made to feel like criminals simply for selling a box of used records. Brick-and-mortar stores are under increased pressure from online sales and this ordinance only adds pressure. If record collections are lost due to individuals unwillingness to submit to being photographed and fingerprinted, it is detrimental not only to my business, but the city itself. Music lovers and record collectors regularly drive an hour plus to shop. Many of these customers come off the highway, fill up a gas, and have a meal while in town. Being required to take ID and hold 15 items and send a daily report while burdensome makes sense to stop the flow of stolen goods being sold. Fingerprinting and photographing a seller is overreach, especially in the age of identity theft. I know I would feel uncomfortable turning over that information to random folk behind the counter and I'm sure many of you also would feel the same. Thank you for your time.
We're not in here for applause. If you will please give your name to Mr. Hamlin.
Sure.
We'll see what we can get that clarified for you. Mr. Hamlin's right here on the end. You have to just walk over to him. And we're not going to have any applause in here. I think that before this, we're voting for the best here.
Mr. President, there's a council, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to echo Mr. Holmes' comments. I'm actually a customer of the store, I've sold records there, and as a small business owner myself, I believe that it would be unduly burdensome, a regulation that would affect his business disproportionately, and that the ordinance as drafted was not intended to deal with the kind of business that he's engaged in. And I would urge you to pass an amendment to this ordinance to exempt used record stores and thank you very much.
On the face of your argument, that's certainly one we will look at. Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor?
My name is Peter Bernhard and I live on the south side of Allentown, I'm a student here at the LRC. And I'd like to speak on the decriminalization of marijuana.
This is courtesy of the floor, it is for anything that is not on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay.
So you're a little bit ahead of yourself.
I apologize.
You started when I saw you on Hamilton Street, so just hang loose. Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor? If not, we're going to move on to approval of the ordinance, Mr. Hamlin. Whole Business. Whole Business with a bamboo update, we had an email inquiry and I think Mr. Reston, you have addressed that and you're going to keep us.
Yeah, Tom Harper has addressed the issue and we'll keep you apprised on what's going on.
Right. And the illegal garages that were brought up at the last meeting too, with information was forwarded to the Police Department to deal with that. And my colleague Mazappa has already spoken to the Parking Authority also. And the boards, authorities, and whatnot, I think we will answer that question tonight. We have quite a few for appointment. All right, reports from committee. Committee of the whole, the committee of the whole is scheduled for next Wednesday at 6:00 PM to review the cannabis legislation being introduced this evening. And that meeting for next Wednesday is tentative. Looks like it's going to be go, but it might go to Tuesday or Thursday, but it's tentative for Wednesday. Budget and finance, Mr. Goree.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, they have a meeting scheduled for May 23rd at 6:00 PM. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much. Committee on Economic Development, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting. We do however have a meeting that was just scheduled this evening, a walking tour meeting, so this will not be an official meeting, it's going to be May 17th at 6:00 PM with the Allentown Preservation League and also looking at some of the historical district in West Park. That's going to be 6:00 PM, we'll be meeting at the Allentown Preservation League warehouse, which is 1518 West Walnut. I invite all of my colleagues and the mayor to join with this and also any member of the general public, it should be an informative tour.
If you could just get that to Mike so they could get it out of the way, to all of us, that would be great. Human Resources Administration appointments, Ms. Appa.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting has been scheduled for May 9th at 5:00 PM to review two bills, ranking privilege and direct report bills, and receiving an update on personnel study.
Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Mota.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting has not been scheduled.
Thank you very much. Public Safety, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met this evening earlier regarding Bill 15, which will be on the, for voting on tonight, and a future meeting is scheduled for May 16th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Public Works, Mr. Zuko.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting is not yet scheduled.
And Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy, that would be me. The committee met on Monday and acted on two items that appear before us this evening, establishing special committees to look at the Home Room Charter and an open data policy. Now we'll move on to appointments, I will turn that over to Ms. Appa and I think we're going to vote on all of them.
Yes.
So if you want to read them and then we can do the vote.
We have a lot of appointments and commissions, so I'm going to read them all and then we will have the, my colleagues' comment and public, and then we will vote on it, I'm sorry. Now, trick is, I hope I get everybody's name right. For the ACIDA, Patrick Palmer, his term expires 1/23. Arts Commission, Tanya Tyler, hers expires 1/321. Disruptive Conduct Board of Appeals, Amelia Canales, hers expires 6/2020. Environmental Advisory Board, Elizabeth Hunt, David Melman, and Jennifer Swan. Hunt expires the 21st, not her, but her term. David expires the 19th and Ms. Swan the 20th. The Historical Architectural Review Board, Shane Feldman, his will expire the 1 January 1, 2019. Human Relations, Hollis Perry, the 20th, 1920, I'm not going to do the 12, 31st to 20th. Patrick Palmer, 1/0120. Janet Marillo, 4/421. Tracy Springer, 2/119. Stacy Marie Otten, 1/2519. Pam Smith, 10/2619. Vinnie Tyrone Steiner, 1/121. And Daniel Benitez, 11/120. Noise Control Board, Daniel Benitez, January 1, 2021. Nuisance Abatement Appeals Board, Lori McShane, and her, she will expire 7/1919, not expired. Planning Commission, Jeff Glaser, he will expire 20. Light Property Review Board, Rebecca Williams, 1/521. Water and Sewer Compliance Board, John Bartal, 1/120. Zoning Board Hearing, Trent Seere, Brian Geist, that would be, Trent would be 9/618 and Brian Geist would be 11/418. I believe that's it. So what we'll do is, is there anyone, any of my colleagues have any comments about any of the, any boards or commissions?
Yes, I do.
I think the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Appa. Since you and the mayor kind of did this thing yourselves without the rest of the committee, I would like to request a call vote for those individuals that are asking to be on these various boards, just to see if they're here. If they're not here, as far as I'm concerned, they don't deserve a vote. You wouldn't apply for a job and then not show up for that, so that's my request.
I'm sorry, but since I've been here anyway, they are not required to be here and I don't think it's a fair assumption that they don't want to be on it because they're not here. They may be working, they may be marching with children or whatever. There's never been a requirement, Mr. Zuko, and I think it's unfair to assume that they don't want it.
I guess we're now looking at, do we have a second for that or not? And if we don't have a second, we move forward? If we have a second, then we have conversation on that?
Mr. President, I think you have several options here. So under council rules, generally speaking, the appointments could be called by group. So in other words, they don't have to be by roll call if need be. However, questions of procedure are resolved by the presiding officer which review and that will be subject to an appeal by two members of council. So questions of procedure solely resides with you unless there's two council members that would disagree with your resolution of procedure.
Well, I guess then my suggestion here would be if we have a second, then we'll discuss that and then if not, we'll just move on as we work. So if there's a second, seeing a second, then we just move forward.
Any comments from the public? Anyone have a comment to speak?
I can't have a trigger seat for 10 St. Cloud. I actually agree with Ed on that, I mean, I'm really wish somebody would second that to at least break it down to a group, that's a lot of appointments. You know, if you go by a seat and then go to the next one, then go to the next one. I don't know, I just believe that you shouldn't, 15, 20, 15 at once, I.
Mr. Hamlin, I'm sorry, any interest? For at least a year, year and a half, and you are one of them that complained that we were not filling these boards and these commissions. We got a new mayor, one of his first things on his agenda, now we've had these applications and you have come up here many times and said, I have friends that applied, I've had friends of people that applied, and we weren't filling them because we had our hands tied and it wasn't easy to barter with the last mayor. It was if you put this one on, you have to take that one off. I'm not finished. So now that we have a new mayor, one of his first things, he was in the office a week, he plopped this on my desk with Mr. Hamlin and I, the three of us, he vetted first and then we went through all the applications, we put it out to council so that they could read it, and what we wanted to do is our purpose here was, we have so many like human relations, if there were only four people on there, we have to have 11. So what we did was exactly what you all wanted us to do and believe me, we vetted them and most, a lot of them are here and I have to applaud our mayor for doing exactly what you guys wanted us to do and I'm the chair of HR and believe me, we worked hard at this, we vetted every one of them and we did the best we could to.
At what point did I say I was against the period? I said, what was the problem with just voting per group? He said, all at once.
We'll be here till 11:00.
I think that's, I think according to Solicitor, that's my call and I made the call that we do it in group.
Well, I don't see what, I think I was against it, I'm prepared to find these people, I just said.
Is there anyone here?
Per group, it's my call and I said we're going to vote all at once. Everything is online, anybody can look at them, it's been there since Mr. Hamlin posted everything.
Yeah, and if there's anybody out there, and this is why we add courtesy of the floor, is there any objections to any of these people? This is why we're doing it. If we would do it one by one and each one of council, we'd be here till 11, 12 o'clock. So this is why we're courtesy of the floor, is there anyone who is objecting to any of the names I read or if you'd like me to read them again, I will.
That's not necessary, they're in print, anybody can get a copy right in the back.
Mr. Mayor?
So I guess, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Appa. I think the philosophy of a city and my philosophy is inclusion, not exclusion, united, not divided. We have many, many talented people in this city who have wanted to be involved in city government for years. We have left our authorities, boards, and commissions kind of go by the wayside. One of my first priorities was to tap on these resources, tap on these talented people out here, to get them involved. To get people involved, they invest their time, they invest in the city. We are doing the right thing to move the city forward. We have 22 appointments tonight, hopefully next council meeting we'll bring another 10, another 15. We have to fill these authorities, boards, and commissions, it's the right thing to do to move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow, I'm going to step on. I guess we've got all the names, so Mr. Hamlin, we're up for the vote.
Okay, for the vote, according to the vote, I can add the control which required on the agenda.
So notice.
He'll get over it.
Ms. Appa?
Yes.
Mr. Goree.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Mota.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Zuko. Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Could I just make one, and I apologize, Mr. McLean, but I have the people that are here to stand because they deserve a lot, they deserve a lot of applause.
That was an executive decision by the mayor. All right, again, thank you all, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Hamlin, ordinance is for final passage, Bill Number 15.
Bill 15, amending the 2018 general fund budget and 2018 equipment fund budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of $500,000 from a grant, uh, from the Commonwealth, uh, for a vehicle fire pump for the, uh, fire truck.
This sounds like a no-brainer, we'll go to the administration first, and then I'll turn it over to council and the public.
Go ahead, Mr. Hartzell.
As Assistant Chief Weir mentioned, uh, we are in the process of receiving very shortly a $500,000 grant from the state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which will provide about 90, almost 99% of the cost of a brand-new, uh, fire truck, uh, which is already being prepared for work, uh, and we're able to get that in on the price before, and the tariff increases hit, so literally, it's a $508,000 truck that we're getting $500,000 paid for by the, uh, by the state.
I'm thinking of your financial background as saying this is great.
And with this fire truck, we obviously, number one priority with obviously, three former police officers, public safety is our number one priority, and we're gonna build a fire department up with equipment and the techniques, and whatever they need to do it down more effectively and efficiently, and this is, this is a good first step.
And like I said, this almost seems like a no-brainer, but we have to open it up. I'll open it up to my colleagues on council, I'll open it up to the public. Seeing nobody, Mr. Hamlin, go.
Mayor, Bill 15, now, Mr. Gere.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. Mota.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Zuko. Yes.
Ms. McLean.
Absolutely.
Ms. Appa.
Yes.
Mr. President, a point of order, Mr. Glazer actually does have a report.
I'd be happy to do it. Your point of order is out of order, Mr. Robinson. All right, we'll, we'll let Mr...
I'm just trying to help the gentleman that I left.
Well, we'll let Mr. Glazer give his, uh, controllers report here.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
If we can do that, well, let's just find the rules here and let them go out of order.
If it's free.
Mr. President, when it comes to point of order, it isn't even any second, just as long as the chair is in agreement with the point of order, then it's fine.
Okay, I wasn't, but I'll, I'll read it. Go ahead.
This has been an interesting meeting for a number of reasons, one of which is that Mr. Camacho is, you know, on top of the, the Robert rules in more times than the solicitor gets asked in two or three years. So, uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I, the one report I have today is the council payable weekly check review for, um, the month of April. Uh, we reviewed 514 checks, the total dollar amount of the checks was $7.8 million. Uh, we reviewed nine wires, the total amount of the wires was $1.3 million. Our findings and their resolutions, we had two duplicate payments, uh, there was one duplicate payment for $11,464, it came through first as a wire, and then came through again in the council payable, um, and I would certainly like to commend, um, Treasury for working with me to determine that this was in fact a duplicate payment. And the second one was for a check for $409.11 where the department questioned, uh, paid off a statement, which is never a very good thing to do, you should always pay off an invoice, and it took a little while to run that down, in both cases, the checks were Uh, we have a MasterCard bill with a lack of credit card documentation, the receipt needs to be provided, and that'll be fine. Uh, we have eight instances where incorrect expense accounts were used when, um, when paying for various city purchases, and once again, um, this is important because when we vote on the budget every year, it's important that we know what we're paying for, the charges were put in the right account, all the departments were advised, and, uh, budget adjustments were made as needed, and, uh, the last thing is untimely payment of invoices, we had 14 invoices that were paid late for a variety of reasons, either that, uh, the vendor did not send invoice, or it got misplaced, or we had to wait, uh, for the order to be complete, all the departments were advised, and, um, where needed, they want institute policies and procedures to pay in a more timely manner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glazer, and Mr. Hamlin, if we would keep him off the agenda more often, I think his reports are very concise when we don't have him on the agenda. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just to address one thing that Mr. Glazer brought up, because I campaigned on the issue of transparency, and I think I have to hold myself to that standard more than anyone. Um, the credit card bill that Mr. Glazer was referring to was, um, back in, it was February, I had attended, uh, conference for the Pennsylvania Municipal League with one night of a hotel stay and some parking, I believe it worked out to about $200. Um, it was a complete lapse on my part, I did not forward the receipt to Mr. Hamlin or Ms. Whitehead, and that created the issue. When Mr. Glazer brought it to my attention, the receipt was provided to them, and everything was cleared up, I'd just like to apologize for creating more work for Mr. Glazer and for that little issue, so thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay, Mr. Hamlin, we're back to the, R-55.
R-55 is an authorization for a contract with, uh, Northwest Financial Group, uh, for $63,000 to assist the city with short and long-term debt financing, long-range financial planning, it's a one-year contract with two additional one-year renewal terms, it was independently, uh, bid, and there was only, uh, one choice.
I will turn it over to the administration, but in, in your explanation, this is only gonna be used if we need it, correct? This isn't...
Uh, yes, indeed, uh, Mr. President, uh, let's, uh, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Councilman Gere for bringing in Jamar Kelly earlier this evening. Uh, yes, absolutely, uh, obviously, the city has utilized the early intervention program before, and it's been a beneficial program, I think, for when the city has, has tried it before. Uh, I would gladly say that what he was talking about and needing to get an RFP for a consultant, we've already gotten none, because that's what we're talking about here tonight. Uh, NW Financial, uh, Mr. Tom Beckett, who is the senior vice president, is up here at the table with me, and if you have any questions to ask on technical matters, he's very happy to, to respond to those. Uh, we are at a position where having some financial advice, including long-term financial planning, uh, along with, uh, consultancies, I'm making sure if we have to go into, uh, debt financing, or hopefully restructure some of our debt financing to make it less expensive, the city will benefit from that tremendously. The overall, uh, maximum cost on the contract is $63,000, but it will be on an as-needed basis, that's a maximum amount, and I honestly believe, uh, that we will be getting everything that the program anticipated we should get, uh, at a very reasonable rate, and alongside of that, be able to get, uh, any sort of consultation that we need to deal with our, uh, short and long-term debt issues also addressed, uh, to the city's financial benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzell, I will open it up to council, any questions for the administration? We will open it up to the public, any count, any questions of the administration on R-55? Seeing none, Mr. Hamlin.
I'm Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Ms. McLean.
Yes.
Mota.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Zuko. Yes. Ms. Appa.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin, R-64, please.
R-64, just to authorize the creation of a special committee to review of aid recommendations on the Home Rule Charter and on open, uh, data policy.
Questions from council, any comments from council on R-64? Any questions or comments from the public on R-64?
Killer 2726, Warner Street. In light of the discussion that we had at the previous meeting, and several members of the public, um, asked about...